Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board's 10th meeting of fiscal year 2022. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of 2021, a measure adopted during the state of emergency includes an extension of the remote meeting provisions. Citizens of Milton may participate via Zoom. Our agendas are on the town website. They include the meeting ID and passcode. People may also watch on cable access or online streaming live or at a later date on the cable access website. I'd like to introduce our members. Denny Swenson Chair, Rich.
Rich Beeler Secretary.
Meredith.
Meredith Hall.
Meredith Hall Member.
Kathleen.
Kathleen O'Donnell Member.
Cheryl.
Cheryl Taggias Member.
Thank you. Nice to see you all. And I wanted to introduce the staff. Tim.
Tim Zerwinski Director of Planning and Community Development.
Allison.
Allison Quinn Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development.
Good evening. Julia.
Julia Getman Clerk.
Thank you. So we can go right into our administrative items and then we will have citizens speak. So first is our next meeting dates. I have Thursday, the 23rd and Tuesday, the 2nd. This Sunday, on November 14th, we have a site walk at the proposed memory clinic site on Highland Avenue. And wanted to propose one more zoning meeting. I was looking at next week, Tuesday, the 16th or Wednesday, the 17th. Wanted to hear the board's feedback on that. Does next Tuesday or Wednesday work for you? Cheryl.
I have a, I'll be in New York for a meeting and coming back on the train. So I could call in.
Oh, for zoning meeting. So both of those days are hard for you?
No, the 16th is fine. I have a meeting at 5:00 that I don't think will last longer than an hour. So.
Okay, so it seems like 16th is better. How, does the 16th work for you, Meredith?
You know what? I think I might have a conflict on the 16th. Um, let me just double check that. Why don't we go ahead and schedule that? That's fine.
Well, what about the 18th? How does the 18th look for you, Meredith?
That would be great. That works.
I have a CPA meeting at 6:00.
Okay. How long, do those go longer than two hours? Okay. Um, okay. What about the 15th?
They shouldn't go longer than two hours, but you know, they'll definitely be an hour. And if you're talking to seven.
Yeah.
The 15th would work.
The 15th would work? How about the 15th for you, Kathleen?
Um. Uh, yes.
I have a master plan implementation committee meeting on 15th. So I could see. I could see if I could reschedule. I can, the 16th works for me. The 17th would work at 7:30. If we want to start a little bit later.
Uh, Kathleen, remind me, would CPA go past an hour and a half?
Well, no, no, that's the 18th.
Oh, okay. I can't keep it straight. But the 17th, would this, who couldn't do the 17th? Is that you were traveling?
I think I can because I'm taking the Acela down to New York and back. So I'll either be home or I'll be on the train.
Okay.
On a quiet car.
Want to say the 17th at 7:30?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, 7:30, 17th, we have a zoning meeting. Great. Okay, so that's done. Okay. Um, all right, we can do our approval of minutes for October 14th and 28th, if everyone is good.
I have one change to make to the 14th.
Okay.
In number seven on 37 Walnut A and R, the last line should say that we voted to authorize the town, the, um, Tim, to execute the A and R plan, not authorize. That's, it says authorize, it should say execute instead.
Okay.
That's my only change to those minutes.
I also had, I have a couple of minor changes.
Okay. Um, well. On all of them or on both of them or just one?
Just the 14th. And I think it's fairly, it's fairly straightforward. There's, uh, under number six, the public hearing on 193 Central Ave, the last sentence, um, referring to Mr. Verma, it says, "He stated that the impacts of the amended proposal are the same or better than those of the original," actually, this is referring to Tim. Um, he stated that "the impacts of the amended proposal are the same or better than those of the original application which the board still approves." The last two words, "still approves", I think should be approved in 2020, so that it would say which the board approved in 2020. Because we're not still approve, we didn't still approve something from 2020.
Okay.
And then the, um, under number eight, old business Winter Town Meeting articles on the memory, as it's called, memory care zoning. It says, "Mr. Corcoran representing the applicant." We don't have an applicant for this. We are talking about zoning. So I suggest it be representing a potential applicant. And then under citizen, or under public speak, it's referring to Attorney Mr. Henry. It said, it says that "he said that the height requirement along their butters property line had increased from 20 feet to 35 feet." In actuality, he said 25 feet, not 35 feet. Those are my three changes. I can circulate them unless you want to go ahead and approve them tonight.
I'm okay. If others are okay, I'm fine. Yes. Okay, Meredith?
I'm, I'm fine with those changes, yes.
Okay, Rich?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Well, want to make a motion, Rich?
Sure. Uh, so I guess to make the motion for our, to move to approve the minutes from October 14th, October 28th, was it?
Yes.
As amended.
Yes.
I second. Oh, I thought we were just voting on the 14th because I do have one change on the 28th. Sorry.
Okay, let's hear it.
Um, the, in the, in the paragraph that Doug Henry, that Cheryl referred to about Doug Henry, it says that the board supported the change to the memory clinic so that it was, you know, site specific. I don't think that the board took a vote on that.
Right, I agree. I don't think we took a vote on that.
And I don't think that's, I would strike that line. I mean, that, that phrase.
I'm glad you caught that. Thank you. Okay, so are, Meredith?
That amendment, then I would, yeah, then I would go ahead and vote in favor of both of those minutes.
Okay. And Meredith, are you in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Cheryl?
Yes.
Okay, Rich?
Yes, so then.
Okay. Me too.
Move to approve the minutes from October 14th and 28th as amended.
Uh, okay. Are all in favor, Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Cheryl Taggiass?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
And Denny Swenson, yes. Okay. Um, and now we will have our staff update and then citizens speak.
Um, I, I didn't really prepare a staff update tonight. I was kind of, kind of thinking I would just cede my time to the rest of the agenda. We're busy, 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 but, um, maybe talk about it next week about some of the stuff.
Well, that is wonderful. We're off to a quick start.
Denny?
Okay. Yes.
Sorry to interrupt this. Can we, I'm sorry, you might have already done it. I know the agenda is posted, but can we talk real quick about agenda and talk, because I thought, I think tonight we aren't expecting to go too late. And so I just wanted to see if we can get an agreement on that.
Uh, yes. So we have talked before. We would like to end tonight at nine because we're having additional zoning meetings. So we're meeting every week instead of every other week. So just want to make sure everybody's still in agreement with that. We're aiming for nine o'clock. So we're going to try to keep all of our discussions as quick and efficient as we can.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to, if that's what we're going to hold to, I would like to make sure that we allow time for a board member, questions and discussions. Often times, there are comments and discussions are at the very end when there's limited time. So if we have public comment, I'd like to really hold that to three minutes a person and no repeats if possible. Otherwise, it's just hard for us to do our work. If we don't have adequate time to discuss.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, and, and Meredith, you're fine with nine o'clock tonight?
Yes.
Kathleen? Kathleen, you're good with nine o'clock tonight?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Rich, for reminding us.
Although I get more needlepoint done if we go to 11:30, but.
But we also get more sleep, so. That's a good bonus. All right. All right. So, um, if, if anyone would like to speak about a non-agenda item, please raise your hand tonight. And now is a good time. If there's a topic on the agenda, we would also welcome you to speak at that time. So, let's see. Okay, so I see, um, I see a few hands. Um.
Denny, I just, can I just make a comment on that? For the public hearings, comments made outside of the hearing are not actually part of the public record. So if somebody wants to speak to something that's involved with the public hearing, they really should speak when that agenda item is up.
Okay, thank you. That's a good point. Okay, um, I see Mr. Dolly. Mr. Dolly, would you like to speak during citizens speak?
Uh, thank you. Yes, I would. Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. This is Jack Dolly from Northland Residential. I raised my hand during citizens speak today, tonight rather, to inform the board that I, on my own, instituted a series, a discussion with, uh, Jack Weeks, Matt Hyatt, and John, whose name I'm going to forget right now, uh, over from Carberry Lane with respect to the residency restrictions that we all discussed back in May, April, May, and June, and settled out, namely, under condition number 23 of the special permit, the board has had and has the right to review and approve the condominium documents. And that's what that conversation back in the spring, early summer was about. And as, as you all remember, it was unpleasant conversation on my part and, and, and others. And so with the settling out of the residency restriction, that language that is in the condominium documents, we have been marketing over the course of the summer. And, you know, as I expressed back in the, in the time, I, I didn't, I didn't feel that those restrictions were appropriate. And, and what we've heard in lots of conversations over the course of the summer, we've had about 180, 150 units of traffic through the site. And we've had a fairly steady commentary on two aspects of it, which I, which I went back to Jack Weeks to discuss. And it had to do with the, the occupancy requirement for, um, really the adults. Um, as it's written, all occupants, meaning both spouses, partners, and domestic partners, must be 55 years of age or older. And what with the feedback we're getting is that we have frequent couples, similar to my wife and I, who bought and wanted these when, and, and we have a two and a half year age differential with she being younger. You know, she wouldn't have been able to, to travel with me and we, we see that fairly commonly. The other piece was what we call siblings slash relative or, or, you know, what you go, or would call kids, um, uh, you know, visitation rights or ability to stay in the home with their parents. We've had, you know, no less than probably half a dozen individuals come forward that have a college student yet, yet not out of college, a graduate student, um, you know, that's still sort of under the, under the, the, you know, the house. They may not be living at home at present, or they may be living at home at present. They may potentially have to come home at present or, or, you know, sort of the circumstance that I outlined to you all last summer was, you know, I had a daughter in Minneapolis that, um, lived, you know, um, in, in, in the midst of some racial turmoil and, and we got her home for a four month period. And, and many, many folks say, you know, I just can't, as much as I love what you're doing here, I just can't accept that I can't have my own son or daughter, you know, back in the house if they need it for some period of time. So I went, um, to Jack and explained that, you know, with, with COVID and lifestyle changes and such, that I really needed to have a conversation with him about, um, these restrictions, these residency restrictions. We had a, a good, frank, robust, and thorough conversation about it, um, and what changes I wanted to make. Those concluded in a conversation at the end of the day on Friday. We had met earlier in the day. And he and, um, he, he has represented that he's in agreement with what I've asked for, you know, pending getting it all written up, uh, you know, uh, quick like a bunny and tight like a bunny. And I wanted to inform the board that whether it's on the Tuesday, the 23rd, or Thursday, the 2nd, that I'd like to come back before the board and ask for their approval on language to, on, on the amendment of the condominium document language on residency restrictions. And in the time between either the 2nd or the 23rd, excuse me, the 23rd or the 2nd, um, I would, uh, be working with Jack Weeks and, and company, Council Tony Chakel, um, to really work out the devil in the details of that language so that we came back before you united. Um, and, uh, and, you know, in theory, you know, presented and made a, a, a easy case for you to consider, uh, an amendment request to that language under the special condition 23 of the special permit. So that's all I have to say. I don't have a proposal. I want Tony and I, like I said, this only came to pass at 5:30 at the end, 5:30 on Friday. And, um, but I wanted to make the board aware that we have had these conversations and we believe that, uh, some rational, reasoned, and, um, appropriate changes are not only warranted but are acceptable, um, you know, pending papering of it. Thank you.
Thank you for that update, Mr. Dolly. I am interested in seeing the language. It's, I, I'd have to look at it to give my full, um, evaluation or feelings. Um, it sounds like you're dealing with a lot of details, but I'm very happy to hear that you're working with the neighborhood and the community. So thank you for keeping us posted and coming in tonight.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay. So because we have limited time, I'm going to turn to our next speaker, um, Mr. Chakel.
Thank you very much, Tony Chakel. As you know, I've been representing Mr. Weeks and working with his neighbors, Matt Hyatt and John McPhee for basically from the outset of this project, prior to the time that Mr. Dolly was even involved. I, I'm, I, um, my clients believe that they, they have something that they can work with, with, uh, Mr. Dolly. The Milton way is to work with the neighbors and that has happened since the last time that we came in front of you. The devil is in the details and so we need to get to work and write this up. And, uh, assuming we get that nailed down, hopefully we'll have something to present to you. You make the decisions on, on these things, but, um, I'm hopeful that we can get the work done and have an agreement for you. Again, I think the, the importance of discussion can't be overstated. And I think that it was a, a good thing that further discussion was had here. And, you know, at this point, the discussion may well work to Mr. Dolly's advantage because as, from the outset, my clients have been very reasonable here, but there's all, they've also wanted clarity and they want a protection. So when we come back, you know, what's going to be important is that we're clear that this is it. Um, and there's clarity and certainty. So thank you very much. I won't take any more of your time. I know you have much to do.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chakel. Thank you for that update and, and thank you for working through that. I wish you a lot of luck, a lot of details there. Thank you so much. Okay. Um, all right. Um, let's see, we have one more, um, citizens.
Did I just, um, speak to that a second, Denny?
Yes.
That all we'll be looking at is the condo docs for this, not anything more than that, right?
I don't know. I mean, are we looking at changing the zoning from something?
No, no. I mean, I don't think we need to. I just, just want to make sure that, oh, that's all we're just doing is that the special permit now says that we're supposed to approve the condo docs and assume that that's all we're doing.
That's all I'm asking you to do.
Thank you.
To re, to review and approve an amendment to the condominium documents.
Great. Thanks.
So this isn't going to zoning?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, Mr. Neely? Richard Neely? Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairperson. My name is Rick Neely, Russell Street, and I'm commenting on the proposed accessory dwelling unit article. And I've reviewed that most recent version and I think that is premature and not ready for consideration by town meeting. This topic was referred back to the planning board for further study by the last town meeting. And the study work has not been completed or promulgated. As I've outlined over the past 10 months, the planning board needs to determine how many of the 7,000 plus single family homes in Milton would be eligible under the proposed bylaw change. And the planning board should develop a projection of the expected conversions over at least a five year period. I don't find it realistic to expect only three conversions per year as suggested in a planning board PowerPoint presentation. The study to be conducted should include interviews with local and regional real estate developers and real estate brokerage management to acquire a better understanding of the possible accessory dwelling unit conversion market in Milton. Since these ADUs add to the Milton housing inventory and the 10% requirement in chapter 40B, this estimate of conversions is critical to determine the number of additional 40Bs to be required by the adoption of this article and the town's efforts to achieve the 10% requirement. The study to be conducted should also estimate the increase in total population, school aged children, and cars. Plenty of which use a portion of its planning funds to provide that information on a topic with townwide impact. And at a time we are planning for more school building construction. Is the town planning for a large enough additional school building, but should the town be projecting the need for two additional schools? Also, a study should take into consideration the impact of the proposed ADU bylaw on the capacity of the town's roads, water lines, and sewer lines, including taking into consideration the impact of the currently proposed 40Bs on the same infrastructure items. An ADU town meeting article in the future should include requirements and parameters as found in zoning bylaws. For example, the latest ADU proposed article contains no criteria for property to be eligible for ADU. For example, to help control the impact on neighbors and density on the neighborhood, the primary dwelling or accessory dwelling should meet the setback requirements and the property should meet the minimum lot requirements for the appropriate zoning district. Proposed article delegates to the building commissioner a subjective determination of what is, and a quote, adequate size, end of quote, and configuration, end quote. And would quote, without adverse impact on the neighborhood, end of quote. For this proposed article, there is no requirement for a neighbor to know a single family dwelling is being converted into a two family dwelling regardless of compliance with the existing zoning. Parking is another issue with the proposed article. Front lawns would become parking areas, albeit with bushes planted initially at street side. Proposed bylaw requires a great deal of additional work by both the building commissioner and the Board of Appeals at a time both were overwhelmed with work. Several sections will be difficult to monitor and force. They may be as ineffective as the townwide 25 mile an hour speed limit. In conclusion, it may make more sense in the short term for the planning board to focus on improving the existing family accessory dwelling unit bylaw. This accessory dwelling unit proposed article under discussion tonight is not ready for town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. Did we get your street? Is it Russell, did you say? We'll, we'll look it up. I think it was Russell. Okay, let's see. Oh, Mr. Neely, did, were you? Look at those Russell. Okay, uh, let's see. Oh, Mr. Neely, did, were you?
Yes.
What's your, what's your street address? Is it Russell Street?
Twenty, uh, twenty-three Russell.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Have a great evening. Okay. Thank you. Um, and um Ms. Smith, Tucker Smith.
Yes, thank you. I'm Tucker Smith. Uh, live at sixteen thirty-two Canton Avenue in Milton. Um, my husband and I actually abut Walcott Woods. Um, and this um, the mention uh brought forth by Jack Dolly and um. Attorney Chikello is the first that we have heard. Um, we are also abutters to, um, you know, to this project. And why maybe it's not legally required to, to inform us of these conversations. It would be a courtesy. Um, so I, I don't know what the protocol is on that. Um, and I just. Uh, mentioned it. I'd like to know what's going on. So, thank you.
Um, if Mr. Dolly is here, I just wanted to convey that I agree with Tucker and Hale Smith. I guess he's left, but um maybe, maybe I or the town staff could be in touch tomorrow and encourage dialogue.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Tucker. Thank you, Ms. Smith. And full disclosure, I am on the garden club with Tucker, but that in no way. Um, impacts this discussion. Um, okay, um, I do not.
Not a discussion. All she was doing is reporting, it's a citizen speak. We're not deliberating.
Correct. Thank you for that correction. Okay, all right. So, um. Marion requested that she could do the Goddard School first. And I agreed if, if it would be quick. So we can move things along quickly tonight if we would. Do our deliberation on one ninety-three Central Avenue site plan approval decision.
Do we need to open the uh public hearing and defer it for a few minutes for this discussion?
I think we do.
Yes.
Pointing, I didn't press station. I just got this on low.
Okay, so um I would move to open the public hearing for the four forty Granite Avenue Site Plan Approval. And then to defer it to after discussion of one ninety-three Central Site Plan Approval.
Any other second? All in favor?
Yes.
Kathleen Meredith?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Danny Swenson, yes. Okay.
And Danny, and Danny Cheryl DeGais, yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry. You made the motion, so I forgot to ask you, but thank you for buttoning on that up. Okay. Um, and Cheryl, I think you had the biggest list on the one ninety-three Central Avenue Site Plan Approval. So when Marion is ready, Marion join us?
I'm here.
Hi, I'm Smith Ketchum. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. How are you?
Good, thank you. Okay.
So I'm, I'm certainly here representing the applicants, but I know that you've reached a point now where you're um discussing a draft decision and, and looking at uh. Changes to the site plan that we submitted since the last hearing. So I'll do participate in any way you want. Do you want me to quickly describe the changes? I sent a brief memo to that effect. Would you like me to do that?
Yes, quickly, that would be great. Thank you.
So um, yes, after listening to the discussion and everyone. Yes.
Sorry, Marion, excuse me. Um, do you have the plan to call up and there's the revised plans to do uh screen share? So folks who might have been watching the last meeting and might be watching this one can see those changes also.
Yes, I know John Tilton is here and um I'm not sure who did it last time, whether it's John or um Sunny Verma, who should be here. Um, John, are you able to screen share? No, he's here.
I am. Um.
He should, he could be able to if he's got it up.
Yeah, um.
I've got it also, if you want me to just.
Well, I, I guess maybe just to save time, I know we're, have a tight schedule. If you can possibly pull it up, Tim, that would be helpful. Because then as I explain the changes, if you can, if you can um enlarge it, that would be great. Okay, because we're, that's right. Okay, thank you. Um, the changes that we're looking at, the principal design change is to the entrance to the site, which is the um part of the driveway closer to Columbine Road. And what the applicant has done is moved the entrance over approximately the width of one parking space. So this new plan shows it moved, the entrance moved over. Um, it also shows thirty, not thirty-one parking spaces. So a parking space has been removed. You'll also notice that there is no longer. Um, a fence extending from the um stone-faced wall. Um, all the way over to the lot line at Central Avenue. Because after doing some additional research, the applicant determined that that was not required as a safety measure. Um, and the reason for removing it is that this is a snow storage area now. Um, and we wanted to have the maximum area available for snow storage. So that fence is no longer on the plan. Um, the wall remains. The wall begins um before, it, it begins at the parking lot, but closer to the building. And, and extends along the building and all the way past the uh play areas in the rear. So we also have changes, if you could go now to the landscaping plan, which is the next sheet. Thank you. Um, pull it down a little more. The changes to landscaping plan are. The shrubs between the stone wall facing Columbine Road and the lot line. Um, at Columbine Road, these have been changed from a row of boxed wood to mountain laurel and tri-color willow. The landscaping between the Columbine roadside of the parking area and the lot line has been changed as well. So if you move further over to the right, you'll see that now we have four Colorado blue spruce trees. These are trees that grow quickly and are quite tall and they provide very effective screening. And these are flanked by mountain laurel and tri-color willow also. The blue spruce should be high enough to still screen the side view of the parking lot, even with the change in grade at that edge that Cheryl DeGais was talking about at the last meeting. You can also see the snow storage plan on this. Um, you see the little dotted area on this plan showing the snow storage. Um, so I, I gave you two notes. I just wanted to point out that what the applicant has explained to me is that. It's still possible to improve these plantings. Um, he hasn't had a great deal of success between the last meeting and now. Getting an architect to review this, so a landscaping architect, this is the work of his project manager. Um, he, where I'm suggesting to the planning board. That they may want to provide enough flexibility that if the applicant finds an even better. Configuration of shrubs, for example, along that stone wall facing Columbine or even in the front. Where um what we've done with the, instead of a row of boxwood now in the front, if you look in the front of this plan. In front of the parking, the boxwood has been moved around so that it looks more natural. And it's mixed in with some of the trees that are being added and some of the trees that are already there. Yeah, i- if um there are improvements that can be made to that. Um, based on advice from landscapers, the applicant would ask that the planning board consider giving him the flexibility. To come back either to the planning director or to the planning board with the reboi- you know, a plan that shows changes in these plants. So that, that you can see it and um also so that anybody else who would want to see the changes can review it. Uh, and, and approve that instead. Um, I don't want to hold up this approval. Tonight of the decision and of these changes if the board is happy with them. But I did want to say that, you know, I just think it's, we all think it's, it's always possible to improve landscaping. So the major um elements of landscaping are as proposed here, but some of these little shrubs that we've changed. Um, we could even come up with better ideas. Um, and maybe even neighbors may give us ideas as time goes on. The only trees that would be planted at the beginning of the proposal, and this is possibly, if it can be done. Would be the blue um spr- Norway spruce. I think that's what they're called. It's a Colorado blue spruce tree. We may be able to plant those at the beginning of construction. And the reason to do that is that they grow quickly. So by the time this school would actually be in operation, approximately one year from the start of construction. Those trees would all were, already have had a chance to grow several feet. The other plantings are likely to be done closer to the end of the project. So that's a quick summary of the changes in these two sheets of the plan. And that's what the planning board asked us to do, to come back with. Um, and. They contemplated the idea of doing it as a condition in the decision. I'm suggesting to you that if you're satisfied with these changes, that you can just approve this. And the applicant then will produce a plan on all sheets that has these changes. And that would be part of your decision. Anything else, John? Anything you want to add to that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McHutchick. Um, I, I, I remembered, um, Meredith had a, a um. A stipulation about signing off on the materials, uh especially the um. Uh, it wasn't wood, it was the exterior materials.
Shingling.
Yes.
Yes, we, um, the applicant has requested shingle samples. And they will be put in the planning office when they come, but we don't have them yet. Um, again, whatever you want to do about that in terms of.
Okay, that's fine.
You know, I don't know what language you'd want to use. I don't know that there's, I don't know if there's anything in the decision about that, but we are following through on that.
Okay, um, so um, Tim, do you think we would need any language? Um, just to make that an easy process um for us to. Have some weigh-in um ability? Or I should be asking my fellow board members, um, should we suggest some language?
I, I mean, you, you would need to kind of figure out what is the. What is the trigger? You know, like, they submit a sample and then we come back. Prior to issuance of a building, I, I mean, it really kind of. I- if it's just an informational thing, we can kind of plug it in for the sake of plugging it in. Um. But if you, if, if you all feel strongly that if you see a piece of shingle and you think you're going to change your decision, then you're going to want to put language in there. I. I hope that wouldn't be the case, but um.
So I think, I think the Meredith, if I can jump in here, and this was your request, but. She had, she mentioned that there's different um quality of fiber cement product. And she's correct about that in my experience as an architect. So um, maybe she's thinking about the aesthetic uh characteristics of it. Um, so if there's product information, and they may not know it yet, which product they want to use. But if that product information was submitted, you know, a brochure or product data. Um, that seems to me in the, for example, at um one thirty-one Elliott, there. Was a materials conference. Many folks who were on the board may recall. They came in and showed us the rendered colored elevation and samples of the materials and uh with some cut sheets and. Um, it was handled very quickly, but um, so I.
So I, I thought we were going to get a little bit of a, some sort of flexibility. For instance, you know, she said sometimes the material could be too shiny or. Uh, you know, y- you don't really know the material until you see it. So we wanted to be able to say. No, possibly.
So, so it, so maybe it's the product data and the sample. And then see that it meets the, our expectations. If it doesn't, I guess is the question Tim asked, then what? Um. So I don't know how that works, Tim, with the site plan approval.
What justification do we have to say we've got the product materials and we've got, they've described what they, they want to provide? We've seen pictures, but we just don't have the physical um example of what it looks like. I mean, I, I don't know the what, uh, what kind of legal support we have for, you know, saying we have to wait to see of, you know, a, a physical specimen of the siding. If we describe as you have in Walcott Woods and all these other permits that you guys have drafted in the past. You've put in whatever, you know, the applicant or has said that they are going to use and you've put that in as a requirement. I mean.
We don't actually have a product specification in the file, I don't believe.
I thought we did.
We had a description and a photograph. Do we have a uh brochure or product data?
Um, we definitely have a, a fairly detailed description of fiber cement. Um, John provided that from, and, and um, we don't know.
Provided by Joe, uh, by Joe Wall. She's the architect.
Oh, Joe Walsh, yeah.
Yeah, so there's a detailed, Cheryl, just to come back to your point, detailed description of the shingles. Uh, and um, they are not going to be shiny. They are matte finish. Um, I can, uh, I have actually on the other uh iPad, I have opened up the um. Detailed construction drawings and I'm trying to find the specifications. But while you guys are deliberating, I'll be happy to email these to Tim. Uh, or, because I don't, I only have Tim's email address or Marion's. So you guys will have that information during this hearing. But there's a detailed uh description of the shingles. Which uh was submitted to Joe, Joe Prondak. He does have that as well. But I'll share it with uh, with Tim and with Marion, so they have it for reference.
I just think it's really important that we physically see it in person and to see the materials. I, just seeing a, a photograph, it's, it's really hard to tell from just a picture of what the materials look like. This is far, far from what was existing previously on this building. As I mentioned, this is an iconic, very special, was a very special building. Obviously, it's not going to be identical in any fashion, but it's. But we wanted to have the same residential feel that it fits into the neighborhood. And I think it's just essential that we sign off, not that we're looking to, to change and, and. To uh not allow this project to go through, but if, if there's an issue with the materials, we want to have an opportunity to weigh in. And, and have a preference if there's something that would be better.
Well, so why couldn't we just put in a condition in the permit that says that, you know, when it's available, you know, a physical copy of the physical piece of the siding. Would be provided to the planning board and, you know, um, the planning board would have the right to, um, you know, reject or approve the final product.
That would be great.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathleen.
It could be added as an additional condition.
Yes.
So, Danny, if I may, on the plan.
Yes, please. Please do.
I think Marion uh provided us plans that addressed my comments at the last meeting about removing at least one parking space. Looking at that snow storage area with fence and the landscaping changes at both the Columbine and the um. Um, Central Ave locations. So, and I am, I support what um she suggested in terms of. If there's revision to the landscaping plan as they have someone with more expertise of assisting them. I think that's fine. I think it, um, I'm fine with having it go to staff. Um, others may uh feel differently about that. One thing I did um think about though, as I just saw that plan, there's a, I think it was a thirty-inch oak right there. And um, there is regrading contemplated pretty close or even under that trip line. So I'd like um the, when they come back with a more detailed landscape plan. To have the landscape architect address whether there needs to be some provision for that tree. So in other cases, sometimes there's, there's a wall built so that there's not new earth put on top of the root ball. That goes around the root ball. I think Danny probably know what I'm talking about.
This, this is the big oak that you, we wanted to preserve, right?
Yeah, yeah. And so if we, if the regrading requires earth to go on top of that root ball, it could damage that tree. We've seen that. So we just want, you know, as um, as that gets more uh detailed and finalized, to give consideration to. Um, either modifying the grading slightly there or to do some accommodation with a wall so that the grading. Doesn't require fill on top of the root ball.
Right, and Cheryl, your perception is that the grading is different now than it was last year. Is that correct?
Yes.
Around the tree? Yeah, okay.
Oh, yes.
I thought so, but I just want to make sure. Because I know we, we did some other work on protecting that tree last year, but, okay. Um. Yeah, so the planning board needs to decide, do they want that to be reviewed by the planning director or is that something that the board needs to look at? And I'm just, I'm asking you to allow that flexibility. Um, I didn't, I don't think there's language in the decision, but let's see.
I'm, I think.
I'm okay with the, I'm okay with the planner.
And I'm okay with the language being revised and submitted to uh, to Tim to, to review. Um, sometime after the meeting, what we just discussed.
Me too. Should I, did, did anyone else want to weigh in on that, Kathleen?
No, it's fine.
Okay, uh, Meredith, are you okay with that? Letting Tim sign off?
Yep.
Yep, okay, Rich?
Yeah, it works.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So wait, let me, let me, let me be clear. What, what am I signing off on? Because we were talking about the language and then also what the language says to do. So I want to make sure that we're super clear on that.
Okay, so my understanding is that Marion requested that should there be revisions made to the landscaping plan as they look at it more carefully? That those revisions can come back to either the board or to staff? And the board said that we're fine with it coming back to staff. And then the other thing that I asked, which could be, and, and that should be put in the, the conditions, what we just talked about. But then also condition would be that when they look at that more detailed landscaping plan, that they take into consideration not adding fill around the, the root ball of the, I believe it's 30-inch oak that's on Columbine. It might be a slightly different size than that, but I think we all know which tree that is, Marion, right?
Yes, I mean, I think you'd want to say landscaping changes and any changes required to protect, protect the roots of the large oak on Columbine are to be reviewed and approved by the planning director or something like that.
That sounds good.
Yeah, that does sound good.
Do you want that added to the language of the decision? At the end of the conditions?
Yeah, and then, and then what I said was that language that you would add, it would be okay with me for that to be reviewed by staff also. So that you don't have to come back to another board meeting for the final language of the decision. So is that clear, Tim? So then do we need a vote on the decision itself, Tim?
Yes, and so this is, you have, you have a draft in your folder. It's titled 2021 1104 Draft Decision. The only thing, the only other question or issue that I had, and Marion had, had drafted the bulk of this, I added a couple edits.
Can you call it up?
Yes.
Share, share screen?
Um, the, the question that I had is, is some of these things in highlight in terms of just the date of the final plans? I, I've been trying to be a little bit more fastidious about this of making sure that it's super clear what the date on the final plan is. We've got a lot of plans in our files. It's always good to have the date, so we know what's the actual thing. So to extend that, and, and I'll, I'll let Marion kind of take off on this. That these plans are, are ready, because I know, you know, the, the bulk of what's in the most recent submission is kind of what is, you know, referenced in the approval, but I know these, these more recent pages with the, the revised parking lot layout and snow storage, and then the revised landscaping plan will need to be referenced in, in some ways. I don't know if, Mary, you had any bright ideas about that?
The right way to do this, because remember that the building permit is tied to the approved site plan, is to have the project engineer go back, if you, if you have now, once you decide that you've approved the changes that have been made to the site plan page and the landscaping page. If you approve those changes, then the project engineer has to go back and check every page of the site plan, because some of them have the parking lot layout. And those will have to be changed, because this parking lot layout has been moved a little bit. So that's what he was explaining to me. So all of the pages will be checked and each page will have an update as these plans normally do. We'll have an original date, it'll have an update, and it'll have all the dates that it was updated. And then on the front page of the site plan, there'll be the original date and then the final update date. Those dates are really important, because they bring you back three years later when you go back and look at this plan, so that you can remember what the final approved plan was. So what I'm asking you for is to understand that we need to update those pages. We couldn't have them ready for tonight, because it involves using CAD, which is used to do these plans, and it takes some time. So we're going to get it done very quickly. We'll get it to you just as soon as we have it. That will give you the date that you're going to put in your decision. We reference the plan repeatedly here, and you need to have the proper original date and final update day.
Right, right.
Okay?
Yes.
So, so that's, so to that effect, we, a, a condition of your, your vote, not necessarily a condition of the decision, should just be, you know, pen, pending the updating of these dates and pages to reference the most up to date.
Right. Right, we would, we would move to approve that we, the decision subject to, subject to submission of updated and revised plans reflecting tonight's discussion.
That works for me.
And conditions?
And conditions.
Yes.
And updated plans?
I just said that, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Updated plans and conditions, yeah.
Was that a motion? I'll second it.
Yes, that was a motion.
Then I second it.
Okay, all in favor? Meredith? Yes. Rich?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And Denny Swenson, yes?
Okay, thank you.
Marion, if you want to just send some draft language for, for those conditions regarding the landscape.
I will do that.
Landscape and the shingles.
There's two conditions that we've added. I'll send my draft, you redraft it, the planning board will look at it until you get it. Okay?
I may change the font on that decision. I don't know if that's way out.
I couldn't, that's fine.
I think you need a constitutional amendment to change the font.
Sure, nobody is concerned about that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Have a good night. Okay, so now we need to open our public hearing for 440 Granite Avenue Site Plan Approval Continued from October 28. And before we ask for an update from Ms. McCutcheon and Mr. Moore team, I would like to use the chair's prerogative to establish decorum. I feel the need to weigh in here, because we've had a few tense meetings throughout this application. Certain members of the planning board have regularly jumped in, often interrupting people as they speak to declare that issues being discussed are out of bounds, saying that they can't be discussed. Words like outrageous have been used to cut off discussion, and I want that to stop. The truth is that this matter presents unique present, unique questions that make such black and white declarations wholly inappropriate. And here's why. First, as staff pointed out in its recent memo, this application is unique. It does not clearly fall into either a build as of right or a special permit situation. It's really neither. Town bylaws delineating the conditions that may be applied to this unique, neither fish nor fowl situation do not in fact exist, as any good lawyer will tell you. We should refer to existing bylaws, but use our best judgment on how they should apply here. On many points, there are no firm right or wrong answers. Second, as staff has also pointed out, we are in a backwards type of situation here. Instead of going to the ZBA for a ruling on variances first, the application has come to the planning board first. This puts our planning board in the highly problematic situation of having to create conditions before we know what the build plan is. Experience shows that many ZBA applicants go in with one set of variance requests and end up eventually modifying those requests to help ensure ZBA approval. So, once again, in this unique situation, we are forced to use our best judgment about how to proceed. Finally, topics that board members have claimed are out of scope are in fact within scope. Whether this is looked at as a build by right or special permit matter. The safety of occupants and neighbors is within scope. The impact of the project on amenities, which is defined broadly to cover existing and future benefits of nearby properties, is also a permissible subject for conditions. Yes, there are limits to what conditions can be applied. The prudential case is controlling here and makes that quite clear. But as the prudential case also makes clear, the prevailing standard is one of, and I quote, reasonableness. There is no black and white test. Judgment is what counts. And we must have healthy discussions to determine how best to apply our judgment in this unique matter. Finally, we are governed by Robert's Rules of Order, and the basic principles include courtesy for all, all sides get heard, only one person may have the floor at any time, personal remarks are out of order. So let's all try to remember that we are all on the same team. We all want this project to be the best that it can be. So let's do our best to try to listen to one another and not talk past one another. And let's do our best to respect one another's different positions. And with that, I would like to welcome Ms. McCutcheon and the Mr. Moore team.
Excuse me, but I have raised my hand, Ms. Swenson.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand raised.
Thank you. I feel that that statement that you just read was directed to me.
It was not.
And, yes, it was.
It was not directed individually to you.
I would like to respond to say that I'm distressed by the bias that's being demonstrated in favor of neighborhood associations and against planning for the entire town. And that the issues that have been raised in the course of this hearing and, and in other examples have gone beyond the legal bounds of what a planning board is supposed to be doing for site approval. I do not fully believe that your statement that you always announce that you are a member of the associations of associations and that you are able to therefore act with.
Kathleen, I think you and I should have this conversation offline, because I think that it is inappropriate to, yet again, try to intimidate me.
It's not inappropriate.
Yes.
There's bias being demonstrated by you at these hearings.
I would argue the, I would argue that there's bias on your side too, but that's in it wholly inappropriate.
It is not, because it's a public hearing, and there's a, going to be a, there could be challenges to our actions in the course of these hearings that an applicant could be bringing if we don't keep to this, what a site plan approval is supposed to be doing.
So I've reviewed the law, and I'm in contact with Kevin Freitag, and we are going to create appropriate conditions by, granted by case law and, and throughout, you know, we're going to do this properly. We're going to work with the staff, and we're going to work with our town council, and we're going to do this properly. And I'm just asking you to be respectful.
I would request the same respect to my opinions as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. So, tonight we plan to talk about stackable parking, but we welcome, you know, any new information that Michael Moore's team would like to share with us. Didn't know if Ms. McCutcheon wanted to lead that discussion. I'm also very pleased to hear that Mr. Moore will be meeting with the neighbors tomorrow night at Cunningham Hall. A healthy dialogue would really help us all do our best to make this project the best that it can be. So thank you for doing that, Mr. Moore, and thank you to the members of the community and neighborhood that take time out of their schedule to have a healthy dialogue on this important project.
Thank you. Shall I get started?
Please do. Good evening, again.
Good evening, and good evening, everyone. Thank you. I'm Marion McCutcheon, I'm here representing the applicants. We have some of the same members of the development team, as you called it, here tonight. So Michael Moore is here, I believe Pat Costello, Ellen Anzalone, Tony Shaw, and Rob Law. I believe Rob Law is planning to share screens. And as always, we have a presentation for you. We do understand you don't want to end this meeting too late. There's some fairly important information we want to get out, but we're going to do it as quickly as we can. So Ellen Anzalone, Anzalone was going to begin with a brief introduction. Ellen, if you'd like to do that, and Rob can pull up the screen.
Thank you, Marion. Yeah, just a quick thing, I, yeah, I'm Ellen Anzalone. I've been in Milton 30 years. I'm a principal and architect at Feingold Alexander Architects. Architects. I just want to say a few things. Thank you for all your comments during this process. Our mission tonight is to close this meeting and get a vote. We think we've been here, I think this is the ninth time, almost a year worth of work, and, and we have shown you everything we possibly can show you to date. So I just want to take a step back for a moment, because we've been so hyper-focused on our site. I, I think I want to just step back and, and look at a couple of things. For instance, what this project will bring to the town is a diversity in housing stock. We all know people who have moved out of town, because they can't downsize in Milton. There's nowhere to go. There's young couples who can't come back to Milton, because there's nowhere to go. It's, it's, it's really providing something for the, for the new and aging population in town. This pro, this project is in direct alignment with the housing production plan, which has been voted and approved by the planning board. This, this, this project is also in direct alignment with the Barrett Report, which clearly states a five-story building would be allowed on the site. We went through the traffic peer review that's been signed off on. We went through the civil review that's been signed off on. And the, one of the things that I mentioned last time, which is clearly overlooked and, and may be understated from our part, but is the sustainability. And I'm going to just be straight up with that. This project is a no fossil fuel project. No oil, no gas. This is the first project in Milton that would have this. This is renewable energy, solar panels. We're, we're, we're really talking, blocking, talking the talk, whatever you want to do it. And we're reducing the carbon footprint. I mean, if you don't get the importance of this, that's on you, but it's very important. In, in what we are, we would set the new bar in town for what a new project should bring to the table. Because, to be honest, we're, Milton is a little behind the ball when it comes to sustainability. And to respect everybody's time, we are, I'll have Tony speak up. We will have a, a brief discussion on the stacker parking, but you all had a chance to go there. Many of you went there. We got sign off from, from the fire department, so we're not going to spend a lot of time on that, because frankly, we feel as though everybody had a chance to see it in a discussion. So Tony, I'll hand it over to you, or Marion, I'm sorry.
Well, yes, I'm, we'll go to the first slide, please.
Yep.
And Tony Shaw is going to quickly explain that. And I'll go back one. That's it. Thank you. Tony?
Tony, Tony, you're muted.
Let me start over. Thank you again, members of the planning board as, as well, and everyone else in attendance. I just want to restate a couple of key things that we had talked about, but we put down more factually. So there were some questions relating to the site and the sidewalks in particular. So dimensionally, we now show the actual dimensions on the sidewalks in Granite Ave. The sidewalk is showing from 10 to 13 feet. This is an increase from the current six-foot sidewalks that exist now. And along Mechanic Street, we are also showing a 10-foot sidewalk, which is also continuing the same width that extends along Granite Ave. We also show the dimensions related to the pulling parking for the stacker garage system, which has been narrowed to the smallest dimension of 16 feet. And then the additional parking at the back where the compact cars and standard cars are shown at 28 feet. And we, again, we, just simply want to restate, as we said before, that in the site plan, all these site plan improvements include a brand-new curving, granite curving, brick pavers, planting elements that activate the streetscape and everything that we can in support of the enhanced streetscape for around the, around the block. And also in, is in congruence with other supporting elements that have occurred in other parts of East Hill, improving the streetscape district. So I won't go into any of the plans. You've already seen this, but again, I just want to also restate that in this plan revision, we have reduced the number of retail from three stores to two stores and introduced a two-bedroom artist loft working unit, which also increased the affordable units to account for, for 12% of the total.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Now I'm going to go into, I'm not necessarily going to read everything on these slides. You've, they've been sent to you, you've seen them, and they're on the website for the planning board. But this is, this is our presentation summarizing what we have given you as evidence that we've met the criteria or the requirements for site plan approval, which are protection of adjoining premises and appropriate unit density. We've provided these, shown how we did it with the layout, the setbacks, and the height of these proposed buildings. Proper provision for stormwater drainage, sewage, and refuse. These have all been peer-reviewed by the appropriate engineers and, and separate engineering companies, and they've been approved. Convenient and safe traffic, pedestrian, and parking plan, which has been approved. Our proposal has been approved through a peer review process. An appropriate loading and unloading plan for the building in sight that we've discussed at the hearings. We're going to talk about it a bit more tonight. And finally, an appropriate lighting plan as shown in the photometric plans we submitted in April and updated in October. So we have addressed each of the elements required for site plan review. And I'm going to go in a bit more detail and describe them. We are going to talk a little more about our shadow studies. We have some more information. The shadow studies important because it shows why the additional height we're proposing against the expressway is not a detriment. That this, this design, this design effectively, sorry about that, effectively protects the adjacent residential neighborhood. So we, you know, we, the first criteria is protection of adjoining premises against detrimental uses. Commercial and residential uses are not detrimental in themselves. What's different is that is the density of the use. And that also goes to the second criteria for site plan approval. We do require a variance for mixed use. We provide mitigation for the height by putting all the height against the expressway. We provide mitigation for the multifamily mixed use by reducing the height next to the residential edge. It's only 20 feet high against the residential edge and it's 65 feet back from that residential edge to where the height goes to five stories. Planning studies, multiple planning studies the town has done have recommended mixed use in business districts. And that's what this proposal is. This proposal has the minimum possible density to provide a reasonable return in this location and with this amount of sustainability. There's very little shadow effect generated by this building. Tony Shao is going to review again the shadow studies that we've done. And we also have a time study that we have prepared that's been requested. So Tony, could you go through the shadow study issue with us, please?
So we have two elements that shows this. This is showing the shadow studies that occur as a result of various times of year in the key months. So the top one is taken from June at the times of 9:00 AM, 12:00 PM and 3:00 PM outlined in purple. And the main takeaway from this is just showing that the extent of the shadows really is minimal in terms of its cast and most of it's gearing towards Granite Avenue in, in particular. At the September one, which is the lower three shadow studies taking from 9:00 AM, 12:00 PM and 3:00 PM. Again, we see the extent of the shadows that are cast in purple from the project. Again, the bulk of the shadow is occurring along Granite Ave as it moves throughout the course of the day. And then as it moves towards the afternoon, it does extend a little bit further. Next. The December shadow studies are top. Of course, these are the most extreme shadows because this is when the sun is lowest again at 9:00 AM, 12:00 PM and 3:00 PM. And the purple again just simply illustrates the extent of the shadows that are cast throughout the course of the day. And then going to the bottom row at March, 9:00 AM, 12:00 PM and 3:00 PM, it's showing a very similar condition to September. It's just that the opposite shoulder season in the spring instead of the fall. Next. The more direct comparison is the actual amount of shadows that are casting in comparison to what actually is cast now. So this represents the current shadow cast and we're looking at the most severe month, which is December and focusing in on that month. So this is 9:00 AM as a result of the existing shadows cast on the properties done in the purple. Next. The proposed design here shows the extent of new shadows cast in the blue that extends beyond the purple that it's from the existing. So this shows you the extent of how much shadow is cast from the new, new project for four story addition. Next. And then a five story, which is our current proposed scheme at shown in red, the extent of the additional shadows. And as you can clearly see here, all the shadows again are casting primarily along Granite Avenue in this particular instance. Next. Now taken at noon, at the same time in December, these are the existing shadows cast by the existing buildings. Next. Showing a four story proposal, the extent of shadows cast from a area shown in the blue green color. Next. And then the red describes our current proposal for the five story scheme in relation to the additional shadows. And again, once he's here also at noon, that the predominant shadow is really cast mostly on the adjacent commercial property to the north. Next. And then these are the shadows that are cast at the afternoon at three o'clock when the sun is at its lowest point that casting in a deep angle. And this shows you the extent of already the amount of shadows cast from the existing properties on the site. Next. The air again in green represents the additional shadows cast from the four story proposal. Next. And then the additional shadows cast in our current five story proposal. So I think the next thing we're also going to illustrate to you is a couple of animations, which I think some folks had asked for at the last hearing. I think Rob's going to pull up some images tied to that.
While Rob's doing that, I just want to add that the, the, the shadow study work is, is done using industry standards and tools used by the, our industry.
One moment, sorry. Just the technical difficulty. I'll pull it up right now.
So these are going to show you series of animation studies that are taken and showing again in September from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM as it courses throughout the course of the day in that time period. Okay. This is now December from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So those are the two representative shadow studies. Again, we did not bother to show the summer because that's when the shadow is the least impactful because the sun is at highest point in the sky. So I think we can come back to the presentation.
Okay, thank you. So returning from the shadow study and it's relevant to the next section, which is about unit density. And for this development, that's the number of units on the site within one building. So we're not talking about multiple buildings. First of all, unit density is that we're proposing here, that's 34 units. That we have calculated that to be the minimum necessary to generate the sufficient return in order to do a development to redesign this, redevelop this site. Unit density produces very little shadow effect. The high side of this development, which is where most of the units are, and the other side is all, is just parking, the low side. That faces a very offensive, congested, noisy and polluting expressway. This is, the expressway's presence has deterred new development since the 1950s. This layout and setback density shields the rest of the neighborhood from these offenses. And it's designed to withstand and be protected from this impact. So the materials used and the design is, is, is designed exactly for this type of site that faces something like the expressway. There really isn't any other site like this, exactly like this in Milton. There, there's further on in the square, there's, there's a park, but here there's nothing. Here you're right on the expressway. The rear setbacks here at 65 feet, the height is setback 65 feet from the residential edge is much more than existing zoning requirements require, which requirements for a business district, which are 20 feet and a residential district, which are 30 feet. The rear height at 20 feet is much lower than existing zoning requirements in a business district, which is 45 feet and in a residential district of 35 feet. So these are the ways in which this design protects the, the neighbors and the nearby residences, residences, residents, I'm sorry. The third topic that has to be addressed in site plan approval is whether there are adequate methods for disposal of sewage refus and other wastes and for drainage, surface water drainage. Here we, what you do is you develop a plan. It, it's sent to a peer review engineer. It's also sent to the town engineer. They both came back with comments, asked for more information. We responded to all those and all comments have been satisfied. And this plan is in, is complete and is satisfactory to the town and has been found to be satisfactory through a peer review process. The refuse storage is simply going to be within the building. Private pickup will be carried out curb side in the same manner that the town's trash trucks pick up trash all along Mechanic Street. Traffic and parking convenience and safety of pedestrian vehicular movement in relation to the adjacent streets and property. This has been the subject of much discussion during these hearings. We have responded to each question as it has come up. But we've also been going through a peer review process. We've had it. We've developed a traffic study. We submitted it to you. A peer reviewer beta has reviewed VHB's traffic study and come back with questions and additional requests for information. All the information requested, including to study additional intersections in the area, that's all been provided. And every comment has been addressed. So as of October 27th and November 4th, the peer review of traffic and parking is complete. The parking design and automated residential parking is already referred to by Ellen Anzalone. This requires a variance. Our zoning bylaw does not address this type of parking. It's new here, but there are many other sites in Boston and other areas that are using this. We've provided the opportunity for you to review, to visit a site where they had this type of parking facility. The fire chief, the building commissioner, planning board members have all made a visit and seen how it operates. And we've also provided much more detailed information from the person who, the company that will be providing this parking for this development, which you've had available to review. It's also notable that there has been one parking facility, a smaller one at the Fruit Center that has been approved by both the planning board and the board of appeals that was an automated parking structure. So while this is new for Milton, we are not absolutely the first. We, the, both boards have gone through a review and approval before. For commercial parking, we have reduced the amount of commercial space in this building from 4,000 to 2,500 square feet. And we are now providing four off-street parking spaces. And we've added parking spaces on Granite Ave by closing curb cuts. So a total of seven new spaces have been created. And that is adequate to serve 1,100 square feet of additional commercial space. There was already commercial, commercial development on this site. There were two businesses, many businesses over the years and very little parking. And we've also, we've already described improvements that we would be making to the sidewalks, streetscape and intersections. The development applicant is committed to making those improvements. And within the construction management plan, which has been reviewed and approved by Department of Public Works and the building department and the fire chief, we have a traffic management plan. So that's part of the construction management plan. The adequacy of space for off-street loading, we did talk about this in, in your last hearing, just very briefly. Because all the entrances to this development for pedestrians and for the commercial space and for deliveries are on Granite Ave. It makes sense to have the parking, to have the delivery zone be on Granite Ave. It is subject to town approval, but we'd like this design because it, it, it's suitable for this building and it keeps any intrusion from these deliveries off Mechanic Street away from residents on Mechanic Street. Finally, the adequacy of lighting, that's the final criteria or requirement for site plan approval. The way you, you study the lighting plan is to do a photometric plan, which shows you what, what, how much lighting there is in each part of the site and how much lighting overspill there is onto adjacent sites. So our plan updated in October shows there are very limited lighting overspill. It would be similar to what you'd get with any new commercial building. And on the site that the lighting is adequate, but it's not overlit. And that, that would be in the parking areas and also in the entrance. And finally, the applicant, of course, will agree to conditions that the planning board normally imposes to provide the minimum lighting necessary for safety in parking areas and building entrances and to use dark sky compliant lighting and use timers where appropriate so that lighting is turned off whenever it's not needed. So that, that concludes a summary of the elements of site plan approval and what evidence we've presented to support a conclusion that we have satisfied site plan approval requirements. Issues of mixed use, density of units, height, mechanic street setbacks and sufficiency of parking and parking design are still subject to board of appeals approval. They require either variances or special permits. And any site plan approval should have a condition that it's subject to approval of any required relief from the board of appeals. I don't, and so the next slide is, we can go on to the, this slide. This is just a summary of the meetings that have been held today. I'm not going to read it. You're familiar with these. You've been in many of them. And as we just mentioned, there is a meeting being held tomorrow night with the East Milton Neighborhood Association at Cunningham Hall. The applicant will be at that meeting. And tonight's hearing is November 9th and that's listed. So next slide. I think Tony Shao is going to talk about these development benefits.
Yes. So I think again, we want to restate that really this housing is geared towards the empty nesters, singles and young couples. It's a very certain unmet need currently in Milton. And it is a homeownership project. So therefore, all the things that associate with homeownership is attendant to this particular development. 12% of these units are going to be affordable. And therefore this helps to meet the needs of the town housing production plan, both in terms of the type of units as well as affordable units. It's also going to provide much needed class A commercial space as we've outlined in the previous slides. And it's going to be a significant increase to the tax base of approximately $300,000 annually. But this is, represents a tenfold increase from the current tax base. And this is not just over one year, but over many, many years. So over the time, this will be a substantial amount coming into Milton as a result of the tax increase from this development. And the commercial space itself will also have additional town amenities geared towards the commercial uses of Milton in the particular as it gears towards this particular development. Next. To also restate about the sustainability goals, again, I, we can't probably overstate this issue of how important we feel this is. And all electric building really is something which is germane and really in fact, almost critical in order to get off fossil fuels. And we have to move in this direction, we believe, in projects going forward from a climate standpoint. And the photovoltaics on the roof will certainly help contribute to the carbon reduction. And the, and I actually, the automated parking system itself further minimizes the footprint taken up by cars and conventional garages. And in point of fact, it's a much more also sustainable approach because cars are therefore not driving around in a garage. Once they're pulled into the system, they essentially, the system takes over so that it's in of itself reduces greatly the amount of off burning for fuel. And the other key thing we might have stressed is that in this particular approach, theoretically, every single station, in other words, all 42 spaces could be geared towards electric vehicles. This is future proofing the demand as we're moving towards a change in the way we use cars and the way we transport. And the ability for the automated system to accommodate this, I think is a very critical, important part of this discussion. It will be a high thermal performing envelope with a highly efficient mechanical system. The green roof that we are proposing on the second level will both reduce the heat on an effect and absorb stormwater runoff. We're going to provide storage facilities and bikes for up to 40 bicycles, which is another very important part of sustainable development at both the ground floor and the basement. And we're going to use and propose sustainable materials with a high degree of recycled content throughout and harvest the rainwater and use it for the plant watering on the project.
And we're going to ask Michael Moore if he would address the issue of mark, his market analysis for this project. How, how he decided that this project could work from a market standpoint.
So prior to us getting involved with this project, I mean, we, we live in Milton. Here at 36 Central, you know, there's a huge market for one and two bedroom units. It's, as Ellen pointed out, people are moving out of town because it's just not there. The stock is not there. So we know we have a market. We have a list of, of people who have already approached us. We want in, in this building. So we feel very comfortable and confident that the market is there for empty nesters, young people and single people. As to the parking and the parking ratio, we also feel confident that each unit will have one parking spot and eight other units will have two parking spots. And the trend is moving away from multiple car families. And if you're, you know, an empty nest. And if you're, you know, an empty nester or, you know, these are the type of things that, that you think about. And one of the things also that we think that. If we can have the commercial space parking, the four units on mechanic street. Be available for overnight parking for the residents. You think that can be coordinated to the condo docs and to management.
Okay, thank you. And just a comment on stacker parking from Tony Shao.
Yeah, so just to elaborate a little bit more about the stacker parking system. So there have been twenty-two puzzle parking systems, so much of the one that we're using. Installed and induced in Massachusetts currently with thousands of spaces across the Commonwealth. And a fair number of them right here within the greater metropolitan Boston region. And we ourselves have done one of them in a project we did in the city. The park plus component who is providing this and the manufacturing installer is literally one of the leading and pioneering in the industries in the nation. If not, actually in the world with respect to stacker parking systems. And they've had a proven track record doing this over almost a half a century as they've advanced and developed the system itself. The particular product that we're proposing, this Jen's product system, has more user experience features. And it's one of the more advanced systems than anyone has seen in the market thus far. And the governing body for the state of elevator board, the B R Systems, will be inspected annually. And throughout the project to ensure that the functioning of the system, you know, is in compliance and continues to work. And the stacker parking, as was stated before, was approved for the fruit center by the planning board and zoning board of appeals in a local project. So in summary, what we wanted to restate is that the project in support of this has occurred through several entities. One, the Milton Housing Committee, which was charged to study the current needs and to work with the stakeholders to advance the vision. And goals of the housing production plan in relation to the master plan. The Milton Affordable Housing Trust was charged as to establish a fund to support affordable housing. To support affordable housing developments and to advocate for affordable housing, to work with developers to expedite the new housing supports this project. The master plan implementation committee in relation to the Barrett report, as has already been discussed, is implementing a lot of the recommendations. That have been outlined there. And therefore, in calling for a five-story building, this is something that has been posed and actually advocated for in the Barrett report itself of March twenty twenty-one. This project's also in a direct alignment with the town of Milton Housing Production Plan, which has been improved by the planning board. And this is a type of housing that is really needed in this community. And so with that, I think that essentially concludes the presentation. I think there's one last slide, yes?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Marion and Michael Moore's team. And Michael Moore. I, I wanted to talk a little bit about stackable parking. And wanted to just learn a little bit more. I noticed in some of the materials that you sent us that it does get inspected, but it doesn't necessarily get inspected by the town's building inspector. Is that just a state agency that does the inspections once a year? Or is that, how does that inspection work?
Well, the entity that's in charge is the state building board. State elevator board, I'm sorry, because this is an elevator type of system. This is something we learned when we looked at the. At this type of facility in South Boston. As far as what kinds of inspections the building inspector or the fire department might want to make, that will be up to them. And they can do, they can specify that they want inspections on a regular basis, yearly, monthly, whatever they require. So the town can have its own requirements as well. But anyone else want to answer that better than I could?
Yeah, I would, Marion. So it's the same, Denny, it's the same as an elevator, right? So it's the, they get a yearly inspector by the state. Before we even start, you know, they get to be used, they need to be inspected and approved by the state elevator board. And so it's a yearly process, the same as your vertical elevator, they, they inspect the stackers as well.
Thank you for explaining that to me. I was, I was imagining in the elevator process would fit in. So that's interesting. Um, and I, I was noticing that the town engineer brought up the issue of safety. In relationship to the stackable parking system. She said, the planning board may need to consider making assurances that the mechanical parking system will be maintained in a good condition. Working condition at all times and will be replaced if required. Failure or disuse of this parking system will overflow to street parking, which could not handle. The added parking demand. So I'm just trying to understand, you know, what are the assurances? Were maintained in a good working condition, you know, how quickly can a system like this be replaced? Or, you know, get back up to speed if, if something were to go down or go wrong with it.
Can I chime in and then Marion, you can chime in? So, Denny, so it's maybe the easiest way to view it is, is the same as an elevator. If an elevator goes down, you call the elevator repair guys, they come and fix it. So as soon as they can, they do it. These, these systems, and you were there, Denny, I think you got to see the system. They're not, they're pretty simple to use and there's not a lot of moving parts. So it shouldn't, I can't tell you how quickly they would repair it, but I don't know if you have. We've had, we've done a few of these and that's, we have not heard that's an issue. Because people in the condo association need to use it. So you would assume they would get it repaired quickly.
It's within hours, Ellen. Within hours, it's a big priority for them. So. People that they, that they have on standby.
And there are people in the state, there are people in the state, because I, I looked at the company brochure and I noticed you, they're all over the country. But it's not like you're waiting for somebody from New Jersey to get here necessarily, right? Or is it?
No. So their signature with the elevator union in Massachusetts. They're all trained. They have local people on the ground.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also say in response, Denny, that the, the planning board or the Board of Appeals could certainly have a condition requiring. Exactly what the language provided by the town engineer was. So, you know, we've just explained to you how it would work, but if you wanted such a condition, it would be perfectly appropriate.
Okay, thank you. I think that's a great idea. And I'm, I'm trying to picture, do, do, do we have that visual where we're inside the garage? I, we, we, I think we saw a little bit last week where. In the presentation where you did all the stories, I'm just talking about the story with the garage. So I could just sort of. I was trying to understand.
So you want to look at the layout on the garage, on the ground floor, right?
Right, the layout, where you can see that, like, the parking spots and the handicap.
Yeah, yeah, the ground floor layout with the parking.
Well, we have that, Marion. Rob, can you just bring up the site plan?
Yeah, does that have it?
Yes. I thought you were looking for a photograph or something.
This is it, yeah.
Yeah, this is what I was talking about. So, so I'm just trying to, you know, understand the operational aspects. And understand the maneuverability. Are there structural columns in here, you know, holding up the building?
The drive-by is wide open, Denny. That's, so there's nothing obstructed, obstructing in that whole drive-by.
So where the two arrows are, that whole path, that whole driving path is wide open?
Correct.
Right, we call it a clear span.
Okay. And, and to the, to the, does the garage door kind of open automatically on a sensor?
A clicker.
A clicker. Okay, so each person has their own clicker, okay. And the ADA spaces looked bigger. And there's, is there, there's enough turnaround space for them?
Yes.
Then, Danny, the ADA spaces, the size of those are dictated by the state of Massachusetts.
Okay.
And yes, we've done it, we've done a study, we have full clearance in here. It's standard width for, for this double loaded parking. It's nothing unusual.
And is there a elevator handicap? There are.
Yes, there's an elevator.
Oh, they would walk.
See those doors by the lobby?
Okay, by the lobby, that's the elevator.
Rather wide, because way back in the beginning, when we were filing our application, we had a question about whether you could move a bike down to the. Lower level, if you wanted to, in the elevator and you can, they're wide enough to have people and a bike each one. And they're certainly wide enough for wheelchairs and, and things like that.
Okay. Well, those are my questions. I didn't know if Rich had any questions. Because I don't, I don't know if he made it out to the site earlier. He had said. He was curious about this system.
I, I don't have any questions on the stacker.
Oh, okay, okay. I, I, I appreciated the tour that Mr. Moore gave me. And I remember he, he was kind enough to show me that there was a backup generator. So if the power ever did go out, people would still be able to access their cars and, and, and to get out. So.
That's a good point. Sorry, I was, actually, I did write down as a question, but.
Oh, okay, good, good.
Thank you.
No, no, that's fine. So I guess, and I think, Mr. Moore, I think you showed me, and I, I'm not even positive of this. But if there was an emergency. You know, and somebody were to panic, there would be a lever they could pull. Or like an emergency system right there that they could activate. And with that, contact our. I'm guessing it would contact our fire department or.
I think, Danny, so the gate, the gate on the, on the front of the system really controlled everything. If the gate is open, the system will not move, will not work. The gate has, has to be closed. But I don't believe that there's a, like a pull switch to, to call for help. I don't believe that.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't know. I was wondering if, if that was in fact accurate. I, I thought there might be, but maybe not. All right, does anyone else have any questions on the parking system?
Yes, I, the only question I have, which somebody brought up. And I can't remember if it was a neighbor, but there are a lot of children in this area that ride their bikes. They're, they're, you know, all throughout the streets in East Milton, they're, it's great, it's wonderful, it's a good thing. But if a child were to be able to say, oh, isn't this interesting and just kids are curious and want to try to get in here? Are there security cameras or is there any way of? Because I saw that stackable and is there any way to just ensure safety to a curious child? That would try to get into the building that would prevent them from, from not being able to, to do so. Just for safety reasons and to try to ride one of these stackable, get in there and say, oh, wouldn't this be fun? You know, because kids are kids and I just, I just would want to make sure that we, that we were considering that.
For sure. So we will have security cameras both inside and outside. But to your point, if a child did get in and wanted to. I don't believe they'd be able to arm the system. They'd, they'd have to have a code to access the panel or have a clicker. And without that, could they climb on it? Yes, but there's, you know, there's no space more than two or three inches, so.
Yeah, there's a grate in front of the gate. The gate is a grate. I mean, I don't know how a child could get in when it's not open.
Oh, they'd climb over it if they wanted to, but I mean.
It's a good question. Any kid's gonna do it, it's probably mine.
And what about getting into the garage?
So, so the garage door, if someone goes by and doesn't close the garage door behind them. It has an automatic closer on it. So it, it will close. You know, within thirty seconds of, of a vehicle going out, but.
So basically, a child could not make the system do anything. I mean, even if they climbed over a gate, it's not going to do anything. They're going to sit there. If they managed to get into the garage, because somehow they slipped in, you know, before the door closed or something. I don't really see that happening with a child on a bike, but if someone were out to do mischief or something like that. I mean, they're good, they're good questions, but when we looked at this system, it was very clear that you just can't, it won't do anything at all, basically. Unless you have the codes and you know how to operate the key system, keypad system. And so children would not be able to make it do anything.
And they're not, it's not possible to slip through. I don't, I don't know what the, say they do climb over, just, I'm just, for instance. If they were to climb over, just say, oh, what is this? Let's get, you know, I'm curious, what are these electric, you know, whatever. They go over. Is there a certain amount of, I remember seeing that there was some sort of clearance opening. I, I just, like, that somebody could, no one could fall through or get caught in between them, correct?
Correct. I don't think there's anything more than two and a half or three inches. I, I have asked these questions to Park Plus.
Right.
You know, from a safety perspective, has there been accidents? You know, where, where has there been issues? And, and at no time has anyone said, you know. It's user error is the problem that they have, people not using them correctly and sends them out of whack by not closing the gates. But there's never been a, a situation like you're describing.
That's good.
So, Michael, I think we talked about this and, you know, like a, like a worst case scenario. Or like something from a really bad, like rom-com or bad movie. Like, you know, parents are tired and the baby's asleep in the car. And then they manage to park the car and then realize, oh, my goodness, my baby's in the whole stacking system. As long as they have their wits about them, they can use their button to get their car back down. And if, if they, something's wrong with their button, they could punch in a number code. And so they just, the parents just have to keep their wits about them and not try to climb into the system. Which, which some parents would, I would be urged to do if my baby was up in the system going, oh, my God, I gotta get the baby. But just keep your wits and use the buttons or the clicker and the car will just come down.
Correct.
Okay, so, okay, well, thank you for walking us through a lot of these scenarios. I didn't know if, I, I'm sorry, is Cheryl, does Cheryl have a hand up? I can't see the hands on this, the way the, the cable accesses. So Cheryl, if you had your hand up and you want to jump in, please do.
Yeah, I did have my hand up, Denny. It wasn't about the parking system, though. So if, if you're done with the parking system, I'm happy to jump in.
Okay, let's see if we're done. Kathleen, did you want to say anything about the parking system? I guess not. Okay.
I do not want to say anything about the parking system. Other than to remind the board and everybody else that the planning board and the zoning board approved the similar system for the food center. Which unfortunately hasn't been installed.
All right. Okay, and Rich, you're all set with the parking system?
Yes. I'm sorry, just a quick question. I don't want to get on this road, but because I'm sure you're, you're probably right. I just don't recall. But wasn't the parking over at, the parking system over at the fruit center, wasn't that like a standard stacker that you would see? Like, like in Boston or New York, like just out in a parking lot where you drive in, it lifts you, then you can drive one under? Or was that a fancy?
It was, it was rich. And, you know, I think actually it was sort of more actually going to the questions that Ms. Swenson has addressed. To the applicant, it's probably more dangerous than the one.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's proposed for four forty, because it wasn't.
Yeah, no, I get what you're saying then. Okay, I just want to be sure, because I agree, like that, it was different, but yes, it wasn't as fancy or sophisticated.
Okay, all right. Cheryl, did you want to discuss another topic?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to thank the applicant for a very comprehensive presentation. That kind of brought us full circle from the various meetings, all the topics that have been discussed. And I just want to frame this project in the context of two issues that I think. And I just want to frame this project in the context of two issues that I think are really important. And one is climate change and one is a livable community. You know, the climate change is a, a topic across the world that is getting a lot of attention and has been. In fact, it's the top twenty-six that's been going on in Scotland. I attended a webinar, a couple of web- I attend a lot of webinars on this topic, but a recent one was about how we really have to act, we have to act now. And we have to change the way we work, the way we move, the way we live and the way we think. We have to stop designing individual buildings as if they stand alone. And we have to think about how the function of buildings are going to change in the fact of the climate change that we face. This building and this proposal do that. They're proposing a project that is in a walkable, bikeable neighborhood. And it's promoting that kind of development rather than car-dependent development that's going to reduce our emissions. And we absolutely have to reduce our emissions to combat climate change. So I see this project as really important on that front. I also see it as really important on the livability and social equity front. Great communities provide housing opportunities for people of all ages, incomes, abilities, and allow everyone to live in a quality neighborhood regardless of their circumstances. The majority of US and Milton's homes are single-family detached houses that are well-suited for families with children. However, a growing number of people are choosing smaller or cost-effective and cost-efficient homes. Older adults whose children have moved out, spouses have passed away, single-parent families, childless couples, or people who choose to share housing with roommates may all prefer multifamily housing. Livable communities provide housing for all of these situations. And so I see building in this location meeting a social and livability requirement, too. Everybody's already talked about the Housing Production Plan and Master Plan, how this has been recommended and studied in East Milton for over twenty years. And I think it's time for us to move forward on this. So I think it's time, we have adequate information. I think it's time to close the public hearing on this tonight, as the applicant has requested, and I would like to make that motion.
I will second that motion.
Can I? Just a discussion? So.
Yeah.
So, the reason why I'm, and, and this, I didn't have a chance to say this at the last meeting on why I didn't want to close the public hearing. The reason why I didn't want to close the public hearing is because on May twenty-third, this project was presented to the East Milton Neighborhood Association. Since April and beyond, every meeting, I feel like I keep hearing, we keep being presented with basically the same plan and saying, and the applicant saying, well, we're going to go meet with the neighborhood, we're going to meet with the neighborhood. And I have really been trying to find a way to get to yes on this project. But when there are so many distraught residents in East Milton and all over town, over this, over this project, and it's the ramifications of what this, this, the density, the, the design, there's just been overwhelming, there've been positive comments and there are so many positive aspects to this project. I do want to recognize that. But the fact that we were told at our last meeting and the meeting before by the, by Marian, that they were going to be meeting with the neighborhood. And then I come to find that we have a hearing tonight and they're not going to meet with the neighborhood until tomorrow. It seems like this is the reverse. They should be meeting with the neighborhood, trying to get to a point where we can come to an agreement on a really good project. And I feel like I'm still waiting to see what the final project is going to be. And I'm sure the Board of Appeals probably would feel the same. It's the same way with the forty B applicants that came back again and again with the same things. And the zoning board of appeals really had to say, please go and work with the neighbors on getting to something that we can all agree on. And I'm not seeing that, I haven't seen that. And, and I find out that we want to close the public hearing. And I don't, I don't feel we should close the public hearing the night before the developer meets with the, with the neighborhood. I think that just doesn't make sense, because that does not allow for comments following that meeting. Otherwise, what's the purpose of meeting with the, with the neighbors tomorrow? It's, there's time for us to hear what happens at that meeting. And I, I want to hear what that discussion is like, how that goes, and how the developer is trying to work with the neighborhood. And then I would feel comfortable closing a public hearing.
Andy, can I, can I just raise a point of order issue? I think we're in the kind of discussion portion of a motion to close. Before you make a decision on whether to close the public hearing, you may want to see if there's any, anyone here to offer public comment. Just to sort of, if, if, if you're going to decide to close it, you want to make sure that that's sort of all said and done. Context of emotion.
I'm not sure, point of order on that, though, we've already, a motion was already called and it was seconded. So we're in, we're in the middle of a discussion on it. I'm not sure that we can take outside comments at this point, can we?
Yeah.
We're, we're in the middle of a deliberation on, on a, on a motion, unless somebody.
Right, I, I. I, I think Rich has a point. I think we have to, I, I think we do have to listen to anyone from the public who, who is here before we close public hearing.
I'm sorry, Danny, I mean to cut you off, but we're in the, so, so I, I'm definitely not the lawyer here, but at least from what I've been seeing, a motion was made, it was seconded, it's being deliberated. I don't think we can stop that and start having a side conversation.
Okay, can I just suggest that I will withdraw the motion as long as I have another opportunity to make the motion tonight? If we want to see whether there's other public comment. But I don't want to say, we said we were going to conclude this meeting at nine o'clock. We asked for board member comment at eight fifty or eight forty-five, at least fifteen minutes for us. This has been one of my challenges and concerns at each one of these meetings, just very little time to discuss amongst ourselves. So in any case, if we can go past nine and go to nine thirty, I'm happy to, to postpone that, or withdraw and then make that motion a little bit later.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm, I'm grateful that you withdrew the motion. I do think we should hear from the public.
But Danny, I'm only withdrawing if there's an agreement to go past nine o'clock.
Right, well, okay, do others, are others okay to go past nine o'clock? I'm, okay.
I am, but I would want to address the question about the East Milton Neighborhood Association and Meredith's comment in that the neighborhood associations are, obviously, I live in East Milton. They're a valuable resource, but the planning board cannot defer its operations and its deliberations and its consideration of an application for a neighborhood association's meeting. That is absolutely prohibited by law. It's not, it's not the job of the planning board.
I would like to see that law, please, that's.
Yeah.
I, I don't believe that's.
Our job, our job as planning board members is to consider the application. We should not be deferring our duties and our obligations to an unincorporated association that does not include all of the people in East Milton. People select who wants to be in an association and who doesn't. And so it's not the, the job of the planning board to look at an outside organization for its deliberations.
Okay, well, there's room for people to have differing positions on that. And I think, I, I, I actually agree with Meredith. I think it would be a good idea to keep it open, at least through this, at least to allow the developer and neighborhood to meet tomorrow.
The, the neighborhood has another opportunity before the zoning board. We're doing site plan approval. We're not approving the entire project.
Okay, so let's, let's move on to the, okay, I'm sorry, Rich.
No, sorry, I just, so I don't, I'm sorry to do this, but I mean, my, I, I mean, when we said we were going to do more meetings, I, I was pretty, I was on board with those contingent on, they weren't eleven PM meetings or ten o'clock meetings. I, I'm, I have, I have plans at nine o'clock that I really can't change at this point. And so, I mean, I, I just, I don't want to go past nine. My problem, though, is, I do agree with you, Cheryl, I mean, it seems like we never have time at the end of the meeting. The problem, though, is we didn't hear from the public at all. This was, it was, and again, hour goes by really fast, but it was an hour conversation with the developer. We asked a few questions. I think maybe there was ten minutes or so of those, but largely it was a presentation. And unfortunately, we're hitting up against nine o'clock that we said we were going to end it. I, I can't, you know, a few minutes ago, I was thinking the same thing, hey, if we're running up against nine, maybe we could leave it open till the, you know, whenever, I think we're meeting very soon. Just an off chance that the developer wants to come back and say something that they might have learned from a meeting, I always think that's a good idea. The fact that the developer is, sounds very adamant about closing it tells me that there isn't ever going to be something that comes out of there that they want to share. And so it's not my place to say that to them, that they, that they should or shouldn't. I mean, I have, I, I am interested in deliberating, but the fact of the matter is, you know, we're, we're in the middle of a vote to close, but we're still ending, in, in my opinion, in a minute. And so the only opportunity for us to deliberate is literally the next meeting. And so whether we closed it within the next minute or we closed it within the first ten minutes of the next meeting is probably irrelevant, in my opinion, but maybe not to others.
Well, my, my concern, I mean, I made the motion, right, and I'll make a decision about whether to rescind in a moment. My concern is we've had some meetings that have been one hundred percent dedicated to applicant and public comment and zero percent to our board members. And I've been wanting to make a statement, I, I forced myself into making a statement tonight because I've been waiting for a long time to make the kind of statement that I made. And I feel as if we, if I don't push the discussion, push for us, we've received many, many comments. I think we know what the issues are. I think we need to discuss whether the applicant has addressed them or whether the Board of Appeal will address some of the things that we don't address, the site plan approval. But we, we know that we, we cannot address all of the issues. Some of that will fall on the Board of Appeal. And I think that the applicant has basically told us through all of these meetings and through their request tonight to ask us to close it, that they've done what they can do. So we're at a point where we have to decide, is what they can do good for the town? That's what our discussion needs to be now. I, I think they've told us, they've said, they've asked us to close it tonight. And so it's time for us to do that. That's, that's my view.
Okay, so, Rich.
So, I mean, my answer is this, and sorry, Danny, not to cut you off.
Yes, please.
My name, I, I'm interested in stopping right after this discussion. I, I just don't, I mean, I committed till nine o'clock. I can stay till nine. I just can't stay longer. Hoping nobody is irritated with that, because I'm just, I'm keeping with what I've said we would do. On the other, the other, the point about closing the hearing, honestly, I'm in, like, I don't, it doesn't, I don't think it matters to me either way. I can't, I agree with you, Danny. I think we, I, I don't see the point of why not keeping it open. I would, I would say it this way, I would rather say, let's keep it open with the understanding that within the first few minutes of the next meeting, we're going to have a question to Marian and say, hey, has anything come, transpired from your last meeting? No, okay, let's close the meeting. And if, if, if Marian wants to say something new, it gives her the opportunity. I mean, that would be my suggestion, because literally we're about to close it and then all go home. Well, we're already home, but shut off our computers, and then we're going to talk about it again in next meeting. So unfortunately.
We said that the last meeting.
No, that's not what we said at the last meeting, but.
Which I think you make a good point, and, and I'm fine to withdraw the motion as long as we do what you suggest, which is the beginning of the next meeting, that we ask if there's any update from that meeting. And then I would like the opportunity again to make this motion to close, okay?
And I think it's also important that we have an opportunity to hear from the public, which is why the public hearing is being continued. So we can't just let Marian speak and not the public, and that's what I'm wanting to hear.
Sorry, Mary, sorry, Meredith. I just want to say again, like I said previously, I, I'd like any comment to be any new comment, because we've heard a lot of comment and, you know, we're going to get in a position again of hearing very similar comments, I'm running out of time again. And, you know, this has been going on a long time, and I just feel as if, if it's a new comment, I'm glad to hear it. But otherwise, I'd rather say, you know, that, that those comments are in our mind and in our records and in our questions. And so we can move forward, but I really feel like we need to move forward.
Okay, and, and that would include the developers, it would just be an update from the developers, anything new? We've, we wouldn't need to see the whole presentation again.
Well, I would imagine if, 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 and I'm sorry, Marian, I'm looking, you're just at the top of my list. If Marian has anything to add in the next meeting, she's probably going to say it fairly quickly, because she's looking to close, right? And so I, I would, unless there is a very big change, and, and Marian's very good about that, to say, hey, we've, we need to ask for an extension or we need to do this. So, yeah, we're going to hear that in the first few minutes. I agree with you, Meredith. I mean, I mean, you, you can't not let people speak, but I agree with Cheryl, too. It really can't be an hour conversation, because then we're in the same boat. Kathleen, I agree with you a hundred percent. We can't wait, we can't have five minutes to deliberate. I really want to talk about this. I do, I do have a lot of questions for you folks. I want to hear what your thoughts are. But I want to do the right thing, too. So I, I don't know, hopefully you see that I'm trying to find the middle here.
Well, we appreciate that, Rich. Thank you so much. Okay, so the motion has been withdrawn until our next meeting. Or we'll make a new motion at our next meeting, okay?
No, we need to make a motion for that.
Okay.
So we need to move to extend the public hearing to our next meeting.
Okay, ten, seven, ten? Oh, our next meeting is, it's, uh, no.
Again, you may want to ask if there are people here tonight, right now, that want to speak in the context of the public hearing before you end tonight.
But what, what we're doing is we're going to continue, because Rich is leaving at nine.
That was in the past, yeah, but I, I hear you, Tim. I, I mean, it, it is, as nobody's raised their hand, I don't know. I mean, I don't want to, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm okay with staying another ten minutes or so if somebody has some brand-new information, but I don't think we should open up an hour discussion. I don't think that's appropriate at this point. That, that's not what this meeting. I, I mean, unless, Tim, what you're saying is, we have a public meeting, we haven't even given anybody a chance to talk, then maybe I hear you, you know?
If, if we're trying to cover our bases, we've got to cover our bases.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't see any stands either.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak at this time? You are welcome to speak on our topic, okay? Ms. Benson.
Hi there.
Hello.
Good evening. Um, so, thank you for opening up to the public, just because I feel like there's a lot of importance put on the East Milton Neighborhood Association, while I really appreciate all of the great work that they do. They don't represent every voice in Milton and E- East Milton. And they do often, you know, reach out and ask for those that have concerns, which is valid, but that also is a form of confirmation bias, in my opinion, so I just, I, I appreciate you opening up. That was the personal part. I'm actually speaking on behalf of the Board of Sustainable Milton. I'm a member of that board and we wanted to quickly weigh in on this project. So Sustainable Milton supports the beneficial and the green components of this project as outlined. And we'll, we'll be supportive in further exploring the details of how these can be accomplished over the coming months and as it goes through its multiple reviews. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benson. Did we get your street address? I know we have it from last time, but.
Sixty-seven Granite Place, East Milton.
Yeah, thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak tonight on this topic? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands.
So, Danny, are we moving this to the seventeenth when we're discussing zoning, or are we moving it to the? Because.
No. No, we're, we're moving it to our regular meeting, which would be the twenty-third. The zoning meeting is.
What's on the agenda for the twenty-third, or what's anticipated to be on the agenda for the twenty-third?
Um, Tim? Do you have a sense of that yet?
Not much.
I think my suggestion. I I think we're gonna, my suggestion, sorry to jump in. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna need some time on this. I I don't. I personally don't want anybody to feel like we're roughed. And that we can deliberate and we can talk. I know that there's been a lot of. Spirited conversations thus far anyway, and so I just feel like everybody should have. The opportunity and that's going to take some time. And so hopefully we can keep our agenda pretty open.
Yeah, if we get an application for anything between now and then, um, it's probably, probably not enough time to get it on the agenda and still plenty of time to do it at a. At a following meeting. So I do think that that meeting, um, should still have a zoning item, um, because we're kind of running up against the deadline there, but I think between. Between this and that, I think the board is perfectly capable of finding a good balance conversation for, um.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Okay. Well, I will entertain a motion. Did you want it at seven ten on November twenty third? Does that sound right, Tim?
Yes.
Okay.
Danny, just a question of matter of procedure. Does the applicant have to accept the extension just as procedural? Do we need to formally accept to extend? Is there anything where they'd like it to that?
Tim.
Um, I I I mean, so, uh, under, under the provisions of site plan approval, there's no, the, the planning board has to make a decision within a certain amount of time after the. Close of the public hearing. Um, but I I I'm not aware of any kind of. Of of what you're referring to in terms of, uh, an extension of, there's, there's no clock right now. Um, in the same way that there is, um, for, uh, a special permit or a comp. Um, so I think, I think we, Tony, what you've got is a kind of very kind of. Clear set of expectations for. What's going to happen at the next meeting, um, which, uh, I I think, um. Is is the best that we're going to do at this point. Um, so, uh, that, 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 that's all I'll say on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'm not sure. Have, has anybody made a motion to continue this to November twenty third at seven ten?
Kathleen did.
Okay, um. Okay. All in favor, Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Cheryl Tagayas?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes, with deep reluctance. I'm just trying to keep things moving along, Rich.
I know. I should get extra points for getting you to make the motion, though, right?
Okay, all right, and any last minute? Things we want to tidy up before I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So, um, I, I, it should be in, so, um, we, we didn't get around to talking about zoning tonight. Um, there are materials in your folder. Um. Kathleen did make a few edits to the A D U draft, um, kind of immediately prior to our last meeting. They didn't get distributed. Up in time about, um, last week. Uh, I'll be posting those on the, the project or the, the planning board website tomorrow. Um, I also had a couple of comments on that draft that I shared with Kathleen. Uh, I'll share them more broadly. Um, just wanted to make sure everyone has all the, all the right materials.
Actually, you haven't shared them with me yet.
I haven't?
No.
There might be a draft email on my desktop right now that I just didn't send on. I apologize.
Um, but I would like to. But before we close, I would like to address Mr. Neely's comments in that I did in my last draft, which Tim hasn't seen yet. Put in a cap that there couldn't be no more than ten accessory dwelling units in a given year. Ten building permits that is subject to review by town council because I don't want to be changing the quantum of vote. But I have addressed the issue of the fact that there's a claim of thousands of these things being created by putting in a cap. And that's in the latest draft, which I'll send to Tim when we get off this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Neely, for your comments.
Danny, I'd just like to add one, um. Uh, recommendation, uh, for the granted ad public hearing. I I've mentioned it before, but I really would like to allocate some time, uh, for Tim to review the staff memo. I I found it to be a really comprehensive memo and I think it's really important and I think the public should, um. Should benefit from that memo as well as us board members, the content of that memo. They can see what a great town planner we have here.
Well, I I welcome, I welcome that as well. Thank you.
That, that document's up on the project page as well for people, um, to check out. It's been up there since, um, since the issue, but I'm. Happy to have you talk through it. Um, I'll try to make it brief because it is long, um, but, um, we'll touch on the.
Okay, and Rich, I will entertain.
A motion to adjourn?
Uh. Okay, all in favor? Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Cheryl Tagayas?
Yes.
Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Danny Swenson, yes. Good night, everyone.
Good night to you. Bye bye. Thank you.